Mitch and I have last night.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our July 20th council meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Oja.
Here.
Mr. Meneghini.
Here.
Dr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Gottstein.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Here.
Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of July 6th. Any additions or corrections?
One correction. The first citizen who spoke was Foysey, F-O-I-S-Y, not Foyzie. And she does not have a sister who lives in the area, or a brother.
Any other additions or corrections? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
With that correction, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the last meeting. Spark.
Motion made by Dr. Hayes, supported by Lee. Roll call.
Mr. Meneghini.
Yes.
Dr. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Gottstein.
Yes.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Oja.
Yes. Approval manifest 2015-13 in the amount of $650,283.15. Dr. Hayes.
No questions.
Lee.
Page four, just out of curiosity, our contract tipping fees, I see. How are we holding on that compared to last year? Ray, are we pretty much?
Our tonnage is relatively the same, but the fee went up.
Yeah, I know that. Okay. And just one other little thing here. Last week, I requested what we charged for our, or I shouldn't say what we charged, what I believe it was mill breath for cutting the grass, a hundred dollars and a hundred dollars charges. I never did find out as to what they charged for that. I would think for a hundred dollars, you can cut an awful lot of grass.
That is what they charge.
That's why, I know that's what they charge, but I mean, is that for two hours, five hours, four hours? That's my question. I asked that last week too, and nobody got back to me on it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Hey, Chris.
Page four, towards the bottom, there's a water phone for the parks. Is that a new water phone, replacement water phone?
That, no, I take that back. It's not what I thought it was because it's too much money. I'd have to check on that, Chris, and get back to you. I'm not familiar with us buying a new pump for the park, but I will ask the question.
Okay. And then there was a bunch of charges for law foams and paint supplies. I'm guessing that's all for the project.
Yeah, that was all for the building over here. There are quite a few charges.
That's split up into multiple departments?
Yes, for everybody that uses that building, DPW, water and electric.
Okay.
Use that building.
That's all.
George?
Page two, second column, that $1,800 for the motor bridge for sheriff.
Yeah, that's our, that's our charge for the lean program through the county. The county handles that through the state. So that's our required charge that we have, be able to use the lean program.
Okay. And page five, basically, Joel, I think that would be the same question that Chris had, the $1,400 for Marion Park toilets and seats?
Yes, the, in the bathroom that is closest to the pavilion, we had an issue with the toilets, and they weren't flushing very strong anymore. They were always plugging up, so I purchased some new toilets that have the power flush. They build up a pressure and they flush a lot harder than what a normal toilet would flush, and we installed those there, and we redid the flooring of the floor there. But this is just for the toilets. And, and seats. That seems high for four. Let me check on that. There must be something else in it besides just the toilets, because it wasn't, I don't believe it was $1,400 for the toilets.
And toilets. Did there, all the other thing I got that's, Brink Valley branch, that $1,259.30, Tricia, I get, object to pay now, that's all.
My only question is the same as George's, so I have no other questions. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve manifest 2015-13, the amount of $650,283.15.
Motion made by Chris, supported by George. Roll call.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yeah.
Mr. Oja?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Does anyone want to address the council on the minutes manifest or agenda item? If you do, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If not, there'll be further time for comment on any subject at the end of the meeting. Okay. First thing on the agenda this evening is appointments and presentations. The Norway area is on board of appeals. Chris Flannick has been a member, but he has now requested to resign. The seat that he was in was the alternating seat. If somebody is interested in filling it, they can come down to City Hall and put in an application. Otherwise, that seat will go away on January 2016.
That's correct, and you're the alternate right now, so you'll be filling in until somebody wanted to step up.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I was looking for motions to accept the resignation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Mr. Flannick.
Second.
Motion made by Lee, supported by Chris. Roll call.
Mr. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yeah.
Mr. Oja?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 2015-18, vacate right of way in plat of John E. Anderson's fifth edition on US 2. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, we did close public hearing, and then council tabled the action on the resolution, pending some information, trying to get some property information relative to the turn, and also, Mr. Carlson wanted to look at the legal descriptions. Grant, do you want to take this one? You've been working quite a bit on it.
Yeah, thanks, Ray. Gentlemen, after the last meeting, we wanted to kind of make sure our ducks were in a row, make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. Ray and I met with Mr. Pip, who we've utilized as the individual to get a survey of this area, so we make sure that we are vacating the correct parcel, the correct area, and have a very definite legal description of the area to be vacated. We met with him last week. He sent off the survey to us. Received it this morning. He's working on completing the actual legal description of it. He's mapped out the area to be vacated, as well as the two parcels that you can see on the map to the, I believe it's east and the west, each side of that to vacate, and also then to sell, which I think we talked about last time at the last city council meeting. The legal description, I believe Mr. Pip should have that done very shortly. As I spoke with Ray earlier today, you know, the council's request was to put this on the calendar for today. It's on the calendar. I, my opinion and my recommendation is to hold off one more meeting, so we have the full legal description. Ray has done a very nice job of inserting a legal description that likely will be very close to mirroring what Mr. Pip comes up with as the surveyor. However, I would just assume rely upon Mr. Pip, who is the certified surveyor, to make sure that the legal description is appropriate. Then at that point, the resolution would be complete, and would be done with as much detail as we need to make sure that everything is covered appropriately. At that time as well, I would anticipate that along, at the same time of doing the motion and making the decision to vacate, we'd also be able to address and close up the sale of the parcels, one and two on each side of it, because we requested Mr. Pip do the survey of both of those as well at the same time, again, so we have a proper legal description for that transfer. And I would anticipate that being done very shortly as well. He just has to draft the language for what the legal description is. So my recommendation to the board, to the council, is to hold off one more meeting. As I indicated, we met with Mr. Pip as soon as possible after the last city council meeting, and it would just take additional two weeks. We should be done with this and be able to wrap up this project.
Okay, if there's no questions, we can promote motion to postpone until I get through.
I have one question, two questions, but my other, like, two concerns were, one, we're going to be closing that alley off for highway access. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then on the map, it shows the alley is rounded. Is that being taken care of? Have you contacted the landowner?
We have tried to make contact with owner of Faith Horned Properties. It is, I mean, that person is actually out in, I believe, LA. So it's, it's a corporation, so it's, it's a challenge to get ahold of that individual. We've had other, over the years, we've had other reasons to contact them and have had similar difficulties, so just keep trying. I don't know, Grant, you, you had some.
Do they have a local representative? If they're renting, if they're renting the property, you have to have.
Yeah, they, I'd have to look and see who their local representative is on that.
If you'd like to be able to have the, if there's going to be an alley through there, that you'll be able to make the corner.
Well, I drove down through it the other day, and very little difficulty making that turn, but.
You didn't have a truck?
I have a truck. I didn't have a delivery truck, but, you know, when looking at how that's going to be utilized, if they're coming into Faith Horned Properties or anybody renting from that building, they're probably entering and exiting, you know, over the property, and then you're basically dealing with either Mr. Beck as a business, or you're dealing with residential. So I think that the, the concerns for making a big looped area to make a turn is, you know, it's probably not going to come into play, just from practical use. But I know, I mean, Grant and I talked about that as well over the last week or so. Grant, do you got any, anything you'd like to add to that?
I haven't visited that area in a while. I have some friends that are over in that vicinity, but I've never used that alley per se. And Ray had driven it. I frankly don't know often it's used, or how often it's an issue. I hear what you're saying, Doc, as far as, you know, it's an alley that's part of our city that needs to be open and utilized, you know, but I, as far as contacting Faith Horned Property, that's something we can also address. I don't see, it sounds like it's a hard time getting ahold of them, or them. So that's something that perhaps we can address if it becomes an issue. I don't mean to not address it at this point. But as to the vacancy of the alley down there, it sounds like, from talking to Ray, it's still accessible, still open, still able to be traversed. The picture that we have attached to the packet that was given to us by Ray, because of the acquisitions Mr. Beck has made, I don't believe cars park along that alleyway anymore. It sounds like they park further down, closer than the area in which we're actually looking to vacate. So having the vehicles out of that area, I think that that alley still is able to be utilized for the city's use. And I think it's a dirt area over in that area. I don't, I don't know that there's a, any, any issues with utilizing that area, but it's perhaps something we can address as the time comes. But I think your concerns, Doc, are legitimate and well-founded. But as far as trying to get ahold of Faith Horned Properties, it takes a little bit of damp on. Trying to address it at this time.
I think you, you might come down to where, you know, how long will you be willing to hold up the process in order to come to an agreement with this particular property owner, you know?
Is the price going to stay the same? It appears that you, the size of the property is doubled on both sides now?
Well, there's, there's 10 foot on, on Mr. Beck's side that actually was part of the original plat, that, that lot. For various reasons, when he bought the property, the city kept that, that 10 foot. On the, on the other side, that 17 feet is actually completely taken up with our utility, and we have to work with Mr. Beck about putting the ditch back in place. He's got a project that he has already come through planning commission, and, and that's part of the reason why he would like to have this vacated, as well as the access or dangerous access on and off the highway at that point. But, you know, the 17-foot area, the, just that small section down and on his end of the alley, like I said, it's taken up with utility, so it's really going to be a nonusable area that has to be kept for easement, you know, for, we have our electric line through there. We have the culvert that runs. It does come through that area from the argon discharge, and, you know, and again, that ditch has to be put back in place, so it's going to be very limited use. So I think from a property value standpoint, it's basically a connection for him, you know, to get over to us, the property on the opposite side. He'd like to have that continuity.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, we take up this resolution at the next meeting.
Spark.
Motion made by Dr. Hayes, supported by Lee. Roll call.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Oja?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Gottstein?
Yes. Last bit of business this evening is approval Dickinson County Chamber Alliance membership. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I, I've laid out the, you know, where we're at currently in your packet, in my report, and our dues for the coming year are $4,500. Kingsford's at five, Iron Mountain's at 55, the county's at six, and Brighting Township is also at 4,500. As I mentioned in my letter, the DDA has agreed to pay half of that bill, as well as we get the, the $1,000 from WPPI for economic development activities, which we have in the past used towards our chamber membership dues, or our Chamber Alliance membership dues. So the city will be paying out of our general fund $1,750 towards the dues. Also, as I mentioned in the memo, at this point, the county has agreed to only pay four of the $6,000. That is being taken up at the Alliance, and they will have a portion of the year that they sit, similar to what happened when we paid half the dues. They will have a portion of the year that they can be at the meeting, and then a portion of the year that they don't go to the meeting. Again, Iron Mountain has not decided to come back on. I think that, you know, and again, as I mentioned, I, I think that at some point, we can't delay based on what those two entities or organizations decide. I think, you know, it's, it's my opinion that we still need to stay engaged, you know, with the Alliance. So, but it's, again, council's pleasure.
Is there a list available, what, what this alliance helped us or helped put in Norway?
Yeah, we have, you know, we, in the past, we have given outlays of the assistance that we get, but for $1,700, I think that just, you know, being a, you know, part of that organization and getting, you know, the, the assistance that they can give, I mean, it doesn't take much to come up with $1,700. The other thing is that, you know, Iron Mountain may have just the advantage of being the county seat, and, you know, we are basically from a micro scale, a flyover. You know, if, if we don't have our listing, so to speak, I mean, you might be just paying at least for a listing within, you know, the members, and so when something does come in to say the Alliance, I mean, they're more apt from a manufacturing or industrial, or, you know, I, I don't consider, you know, some commercial, retail, really as, as something that goes through economic development. I think that they, it's been my experience that if somebody's moving in the area in retail, they typically will go right to, right to the city, and they typically go right to your largest city. So, you know, when you're dealing with more of an industrial or manufacturing type setup, I believe that, you know, we need to be able to have at least our listings with them. So to me, that, that is every bit worth the $1,700 that we end up spending out of our general fund.
Well, I agree with Ray partially with your, because I think you need, you'd be the lesson, but to the advantage you were getting, I don't see it worth it, whatever. As far as the $1,700, we could use that someplace else. I, I just don't feel that Norway's getting a fair shake on it. Nobody else is in the county stepping up and helping out. Iron Mountain, the county don't, they're dissatisfied with it. You got a problem. You got a problem with the whole county.
What are they going to do? Do they, have they said anything about addressing that? I mean, right now, they're looking at a $7,500 deficit in their funding. What's their, are they going to be coming back for more money, or what are they going to be doing to address that?
No, they're not coming back for more money. They have to address that internally with their expenses. I mean, they just have to take care of that internally. You know, the, the multicolor building is one example of a listing that, you know, I know they've been working with me on, not only the Alliance and what tools they may have to get that information out, but also the MEDC. You know, we're working closely with them to try and get building information out. They have us posted within their, you know, contacts. I've been working on, on trying to do some, to zero in on some potential types of businesses that, that might work in that type of building. So, you know, that's something that currently that they're helping us out with. It doesn't have a, because we don't have somebody moving in, it doesn't have a success right now, but it's, it's definitely something on the short term that we've been dealing with them on. And Bruce has been working with me on trying to figure out maybe some, some calls, and where to go. So he's, he has been spending some time with me on that particular facility.
Personally, I've been supportive of the economic development every time it's come up. Like, I think we're, we're too small to handle this kind of, just putting the city out on our own, so we need somebody like the Chamber Alliance to do it. I agree with George's point. We haven't seen a lot direct from them. I think we've seen some indirect where business comes in in Iron Mountain. Some of the people live and shop here, so I think we see some indirect. We haven't seen a lot of direct. But I still think it's valuable for the city to be part of it.
Well, I appreciate the DDA stepping up, but I'm not a math major, but maybe I'm missing something here. Our dues are 4,500. The DDA's picking up half of that, right?
Well, we take, you get $1,000 in WPPI.
Well, yeah, but is that the DDA, or is that given to our share?
No, the, the, we pay $1,000, and then they're going to pay half of whatever.
The $1,000 is taken off that?
It's taken off, so that's 3,500, and then they're willing to pay up to half, you know, the half for that.
Well, I suggest, I got to agree with George somewhat, and I have to agree with Jeremy somewhat, and this has been sticking in my craw ever since the city of Iron Mountain has not been paying their dues, and they get more benefit than anybody as far as I'm concerned, but we do need this. So why don't we just take like 50% of that off, and cut our dues down to the, what's half of 1,750?
Well, that's 900 bucks.
The city, the city share.
Eight hundred and seventy-five.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, eight seventy-five.
Lee, why don't we cut to 40, $4, $4,500 of the half?
Well, we can do that too. I mean, it's the old, to me, what have they done for us lately, and I can't really see anything. I mean, granted, if something does come into Iron Mountain or Kingsford, or even the general area, I mean, people in Norway will work there. I mean, benefits the whole county, and that brings you back to the county not paying their fair share. And I have no problem with fair share, but this isn't, not when people don't pay.
I think it's worth us being in the, in the Alliance. You know, we don't get a lot of direct benefits all the time from it, but the indirect benefits do help us out. They do help us with our economic development, because we're just too small for it. I don't think it's, you know, if, if we're not, if we're going to pay half and just not do it all, you know, I don't, I don't want to get into that situation, you know, in the past.
I agree.
Didn't we only pay half last year?
Yes, and I sat on the board a half a year. That, what, what they're doing is they're saying the dues are 4,500. If, whatever proportion you pay, that's how many meetings you can basically go for, you know, that, that's how part of the year that you'll be a member, so. The DDA, in, in agreeing to pay, you know, the half, did fully support being a member. So whatever, whatever that's worth for the council.
Well, the only reason I'll vote yes on this is because the DDA is kicking in in there for it.
I'll make a motion, we pay $750 towards the dues for the Dickinson County Chamber Alliance membership.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Hayes, supported by Chris. Roll call.
Mr. Oja?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes, with regrets.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
No.
That's our business this evening. If anyone from the audience wants to address the council, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Mark, I was under the impression that there were some things brought up about my billboard project on the, it'd be on the east side of town. It was billed out, right close to $2,000, under the guidelines that the council had approved for the rate structures, for the vehicles that were used, and the rates for the labor. So everything was billed out, and I don't know if anybody has any questions. I just wanted to make that perfectly clear.
Well, I'm the one that brought it up, Mark, because people asked me what our city crew was doing putting them up, and I've been getting hammered for two weeks on this, and I said, yes, it was paid for, he was billed out for. I don't think it was right that we do that, helping private industry, competing against private industry, and that's what most of the people that talk to me about. They didn't think it was right, and as people tell me things, I bring it up here. That's what I'm here for.
What, what did they mean by competing against private industries?
If the city, if, if, nobody? Who said them the first time?
City, uh, city did.
Well, they shouldn't have done it then either.
Why, it's paid for? I mean, it's, it's paid for. There's nobody else that sets them. MJ doesn't come out and set that, that.
Oh, they, they do it if you pay them properly. If the price is right, you would have, they would have paid you.
So in other words, that if, if the city is putting in underground power, the city shouldn't be putting in underground power in houses, because that's the same thing. You're, you're paying.
No, no, it isn't. That's an electrical crew doing non-electrical work. There was no wiring there, nothing. We've had problems getting stuff built around here.
Yeah, but you all.
Our own stuff. I keep hearing, we don't have time for this, we don't have the manpower, and all of a sudden, they take a half a crew for half a day and go and do that. And I feel that's wrong, and so do the people who told me about it.
But you're also, they, I don't know if they knew that it was paid for, that it was billed out by the rate structure.
Everybody knows it was paid for.
There's just, some people have a philosophical issue with the city doing that kind of work for private business, and that's, people are going to feel that way.
Well, the city, you know, the city, I, I don't, I don't think that, you know, I understand what you're saying, Jeremy, but it's the same with picking up snow. When the city goes to pick up snow at private businesses, it's billed to the structure that the council approved, per truck, per hour, man hour, and all that stuff. And you're competing against Scott Warren, you're competing against Justin Hart, you're competing against Chris Webber. against Chris Weber for hauling the snow. So, how is that any different?
That's kind of what we're.
It's under the rate structure, right?
That, that's kind of what we were talking about, coming up with a policy as to what we're gonna do and what we're not wanting to do. That's something we're, the city, we're gonna have to work on. What we're gonna be working on is that policy and discussing as to what, what we think we should and shouldn't be doing. So.
No, I think they should have worried about when the Fairgrounds had their electrical work done out there when it was like five thousand dollars under the estimate. And some of the people in the council agreed to bite that off and pay it with the utility customers' money. That's the part that wasn't right because that wasn't paid for by the, by the people that did the work, that received the work.
Thank you. Anyone else was to address the council? Hey, Chris?
Uh, just a note, we had an executive memo about the, the speed limits or speed radar signs over on US eight. I, personally, I think that's something that I think would help with the speed over there, at least letting people know, the neighbors know, like keeping track of what is actually happening on the road.
And then people can see how fast they can build up to get to it.
More of that too. But I, I would like to see us look into that a little bit more and see the possibility of actually putting up that sign. I know we can't use it for enforcement, but at least for record keeping and notifying people, I think it would help. That's all.
George. Dr. Hayes?
I was wondering where we're coming with the annexation. Haven't brought that up in.
Have we, have we gotten to that one? Let's get the annexation of that forty.
Um, my understanding is Ray was working with the township, chatting with them about options, about the process and breaking, breaking the ice, if you will, before moving further and, and.
Well, I got, I, I did mention before that that is a contentious issue, irregardless of the use. So, it's something that, we already got a response.
Because you're not gonna do it because they don't want us to do it then?
I think you have to, I think you have to, as a council, decide, is that something we want to proceed on? I think dealing with the fishing, the boat launch area, Hanbury, it's a park, probably not, you know, that alone is probably not going to be as contentious. But the forty acres up north of town is a contentious issue. So.
I felt, I felt with Dr. Hayes that we should annex that in so our police can.
It's, you know, it's used by a variety of people for as a target range. And our police right now have no authority there.
No, we don't, we don't allow people to go in there and just use it as a target range.
I said a variety of people. It's mostly police officers, but I know the sheriffs, the barbers, state police.
Oh, well, they, they do it under our direction, you know, that our, we open a gate and allow them to go in. But they, they have to coordinate that again through, through the police department. And now we have an active mine pit, which, you know, that limits even further activity. I, I don't believe that, since we've started the gravel activities, I don't believe that we've had anybody other than our crew, our police department go up there, you know, if they have, Joe.
Not that I'm aware of.
Right.
Did, did we ever find out if a gravel pit counted as approved?
Well, I didn't, that's.
So, that was the big question.
It's been a gravel pit for.
Well, that was a question that we were researching.
Right.
If I remember correctly, it was, I think we decided that it was, it was vacant land, not active. And I think it was, if I remember correctly, I have to think I went back in the notes, it was a couple months ago, but I think it was possible to do it. But yet, the question is, do you want to do it with, I mean, it's basically, you know, under the, the manner which you do it and then the annexation of it, you're essence pulling in property from the township into the city. So, there's more to it than just a, it appears like you can't.
We don't pay taxes on it. Township is losing nothing. It just gives our police officers the ability to police that area. It's fenced off, but that, that isn't gonna keep many people out of there. Maybe keep vehicles out of there, but it isn't gonna keep people out of there. So, we have no way of policing it. And it is our property. I think it, it's like the Marion Park is part of our, part of the city and should be within the corporate city limits. It's right on the edge.
What's the rest of the council too?
Really, what's the advantage to it?
We can police it. Right now.
That's, that's the only advantage.
If our guys were out there shooting and somebody did something other, they would have to call the sheriff to come out there and take care of it. Which seems a little, it seems a little ridiculous, but that's.
Yeah. It's outside of our jurisdiction. We've had problems at the boat lands, boat landing enforcement. What we end up doing is, if we can get the call, if we know that activity's going on, we'll wait until they exit, you know, and then they get back into our jurisdiction. It would be more beneficial to be able to go right in there and deal with it.
But at the same token, if something happens downtown Vulcan and they call and there's nobody available, then they call Norway, we're going.
You're right. But then we'd have to rely on them not choosing to send the officer and to call on us.
I think it makes sense if the boat landed, but at the range, I'm not sure it's worth that, the fight.
Well, let's put it this way. How expensive would the fight be to get it?
There's no fight. I mean, what would they do?
Discussion?
It's discussion.
I would have to rely on our legal counsel.
I don't think the process is all that complicated.
No.
Let's take a look then at.
Well, we can look at it harder.
Moving it forward. Hey, Dr. Hayes, anything else?
Uh, no, that would be my concern to me.
Lee?
Oh, traffic on US eight, Chris had mentioned it there. It's, it's a shame that it come to this with forty-nine. People signed that petition to slow the traffic down. And I know this isn't the answer to it, but how many years has it been going on that we're trying to get it slowed down by Marion Park? And that's strictly the state. If we could get the traffic slowed down to forty-five miles an hour at Marion Park, at least it'll be going slower. Here, you're coming in, let's face it, the speed limit's fifty-five. Most people are doing sixty. They hit Oakcrest Drive, they see the twenty-five. Well, they back off the gas. They don't brake. They back off the gas. And by the time you hit Danielson's, you're probably doing forty, forty-five. And they still don't hit the brake and they're gonna be doing thirty-five right up to, was it Fourth Avenue, I believe it is. So, if we could get that changed, which I know we've been trying to get, I've been here for five and a half years and like hitting my head against the wall, just can't tell them to slow it down.
In defense, and I know you're not, if you're attacking our police, but.
No, I'm not attacking our police.
And, and just for the public, in defense of our police, they do sit there, they do control it. They can't be everywhere at all times. So, when they're there, there's, people are slowing down when they're not there. But there's nothing, we, we can't be everywhere. So.
Well, if, if residents were concerned about maybe moving the spot that they sit so they can catch people, the other option would be if we got a, a used car that looks like a police car, we could just park it there.
Put the big logos back on the pool cart?
Well, we've got the same, same issue on a smaller scale up to where I live. They're still complaining about cars going through there forty, forty-five miles an hour on that lower road. And I mean, the cops have been sitting there, just wrong time, wrong place, whatever. They just can't get anybody and nothing's changed. And that's been going on for years. The other thing I have to say is congratulations to the U-12 Boys Norway Area Basketball Team for winning the district. So, that means they're going downstate baseball, boys baseball. There were a lot of people out Marion Park this past weekend watching baseball games and the netting did work very well. That's all I have.
Uh, the only thing I got is I've been getting a lot, lot of complaints about the, the hot patch that we're using and not getting packed in and getting tracked into carpets and not being able to get it out of carpets, then rugs and that sort of thing. Is there something we can do different to pack it in better, to keep it? I know when we drive over it, it, it will settle in and after some time, but I'm getting a lot of complaints about that.
They did Hillcrest Drive today. I could tell coming down.
I don't know if they're actually packing it or just driving over it.
I'll see. It holds up a hell of a lot better on the road.
It's special sticky stuff.
It must be binding in better.
Over by me, I haven't noticed it any better. The cold patch they did last year held up until break up, spring break.
This is if I think it's holding twice as good.
This particular patch has about four times more tack in it than what we previously used. And it, for the first probably four or five days, it's very sticky and it just sticks to everything. It sticks to your vehicle, sticks to your feet. It's sticky, but it's gonna stay. So, that's one of the downsides of it. Once it's been driven over for a few days, it tends to coat over and it gets hard and then there's no more of that picking it up anymore. It's solid. I think one part is it's the nature of the, the work. I mean, it's just kind of the way it is. Whether or not it's actually tampable to the point where it would be if it was driven on for four or five days, I don't know. I haven't tried to take a compactor out there and beat it in. I, I think it probably wouldn't work that well, but we could try that. I mean, I can, then I could honestly tell you that we tried it and it really isn't working that good. So, uh, but then we gotta drag around a compactor with it.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking because I'm.
Yeah, I know. I understand, I understand why you're asking. I, I get that.
Personally.
It sticks to everything.
Personally, they do right in front of where I park. So, I'm, I had no issue. I just had to keep cleaning out my floor mats.
The equipment that we're using.
There are a lot of people in carpets, especially.
Yeah, the equipment that we're using is, is getting all full of that. It's tough to clean off the shovels, but it really works well. It really works.
I know it's hard to clean off the tires too because you can see where they're going now.
Yeah. And it's, well, you, as people drive over it, you see the black tracks for about three or four days and then that goes away. So, it's, it's, the county turned me on to this. That's all they use too, is the CP seven. And they've had a lot of good luck with it and they recommended that, that's what we use.
Is that much more expensive than the other stuff?
It's about thirty dollars a yard more than the other stuff, yeah. It, it's relatively not a lot of money when you look, if it's gonna last longer.
Well, that's.
If you get several seasons out of it and we don't have to go back eight times to the same pothole.
Well, that'll really be waiting for spring and seeing what happens.
Yeah.
It will really be the test of.
It, it will be. I, you know, talking to the guys that are actually putting it down and they said that they feel that it's, it's working really well and they think it's gonna last. Time will tell. So.
That's all I had.
I got one more thing. How are we doing at our dam?
The hydro dam, FERC is coming on Wednesday for their annual inspection. The waters are receding, so we only have two units running right now. TCR is working in unit number four, doing some of that concrete restoration we approved last year. There was a five-year stretch where we're gonna do a little bit every year. They're in there, the pits de-watered. They're quoting the interior of the wall with a, a product that will seal the water off. It actually grows into the concrete and seals it. The reason for doing this is we had water that was entering into the concrete and migrating out to the edge of the actual dam structure. Then in the winter, when it would freeze, it would expand that water and blow the concrete apart. So, this is how we're attacking it from the inside out. There was a large crack in the downstream side wall that water from the upper wall was migrating in and pouring out. The guys drilled it and injected it. I was pleasantly surprised today when I checked it and it was totally dry. No water was coming out at all. Did an excellent job on that. If FERC gives me the go-ahead this week, Wednesday, when they come, which I'm not sure if they will or not at this point, but we're planning on starting a cofferdam construction for the gate maintenance also by the end of the month. Start building that and get that gate redone like we talked about. Compost site, we worked several days up there last week. All the debris has been picked up. We have the bulldozer up there. We started to level the best we could. There's a lot of ledge rock in that area. We've been gravelling and pushing old compost piles back. Bids for some fencing and gates are out. They should be in by the twenty-ninth for the next council meeting for approval for the fencing. So, that's moving forward.
How big is that area gonna be, Joe? The actual fenced-in?
The actual fenced-in area is ju, all I'm fencing is the main road coming in. There's gonna be a gate there. Then along the side by the parking lot for the golf course, there'll be a fence that goes up to the woods there.
So, nobody can slip through.
And a gate there. So, nobody can come in around. Okay? The actual area that's up there is several acres. It's pretty big, but it has been a compost for our needs, a dumping site for a long time. There's many years of leaves up there that are just ready to be sand, put through a trommel and actually get topsoil out of. I was talking to an individual today about bringing a trommel in and running all that stuff through. So, we're having conversations about bringing that in and, and cleaning some of this up so we get more room up there, open it up even more than what it is now and do a little more gravelling and try to make it a really nice organized compost area. So, that's.
Anything else?
No, that's about it for the moment that I can think of.
Tricia. Anything?
Election August fourth.
I'm gonna speak into the mic so everybody can.
There's an election August fourth.
The only thing on the ballot for August fourth is that county millage. Then the regular city council election will be in November.
Mm-hmm.
Greg?
Just like to welcome my neighbor George back. Nice to see you back at the council. And that's all I've got.
Great.
Well, same. Good to see you back, George.
Okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion made by Lee, supported by Chris. Roll call.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yep.
Mr. Oja?
Yes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.